I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Zarzaki, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Roman?
Here.
Ms. Chick will be absent with notice. Mr. Kuzno?
Here.
Mr. Aquinto?
Here.
Ms. Infante?
Here.
Ms. Stephens?
Here.
And Zarzaki present.
Thank you. Everyone receive copy of the agenda. I'd like to make a motion to switch items 10 and 11 on the agenda.
I will support that and support the adoption of the agenda as amended.
Any questions on the motion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Call to public. Anyone wishing to address the planning commission may speak up to the, step up to the microphone. You have three minutes. None tonight? Thank you. Clarifications from commissioners? None? Thank you. Correspondence? Ms. Byrd?
There now.
Thank you. No public hearings tonight. We'll go to reports from committees. Board of trustees, Ms. Chick is absent, so we will go to ZBA report. Ms. Stephens?
Thank you. On September 18th, we heard a variance request from Corey Cannetts on behalf of Robert and Suzakarsa, the property owners, at 3375 Five Mile Road. It was a variance from the section of the ordinance that limits the length of a driveway to 1,000 feet. The property that they are interested in purchasing is a flagship and the stem of the flag necessitated a request for the variance for a 1,365-foot length driveway. The board did approve it unanimously and it was approved with the condition that all the fire department requirements for the dry hydrant be met.
Thank you. Staff, Ms. Byrd?
Thank you.
Thank you. Planning consultant, Mr. Lippens?
Nothing that's not on the agenda this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Aquinto, Parks and Recs?
Yes, thank you. There is a meeting tomorrow evening at 7:00 o'clock downstairs for the Parks and Rec. They are open meetings. Anyone from the public is invited to attend. Anyone on the board here is invited to attend as well. The two main projects we've had going this summer have been the community garden, which was filled to capacity, and it has been a very good asset to provide to township residents. And those that are interested in that for next year, please contact the township office and they will put you on a roster for that. And then our other item has been the Bark Park, which has again been a great success and greatly used by residents of the township. And again, that is open from dawn till dusk and you can bring your own water there for your pet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aquinto. Downtown planning group, Ms. Infante?
Nothing that hasn't been met since our last meeting.
Okay, thank you. We'll continue on to new business. This is a site plan review. To recommend, to approve, approve with conditions or deny the request to Hatfield Holdings, 8475 Main Street, Whitmore Lake, Michigan. The existing first floor is 1,979 square feet. Oh, excuse me, 1,979 square feet, correct? With a proposed addition of 217 square feet. And the existing second floor is 441 square feet with a proposed addition of 174 square feet. Parcel number B 0208250017 is zoned GC, general commercial. Mr. Lippens, will you please go through your review, please?
Yes. Thank you very much. The site is the Bobber Down site, restaurant across the street. The proposed addition is conforming to the current, the current site or floor plan of the building, which does not conform with township's current setback requirements. So the petitioner did go to the ZBA, request a variance for the addition from that setback requirement, which was received. That information is in, is in the packet. So with that, the consideration of the request for the addition is, is, you know, more in line with the requirements. We do have a few things that we're recommending as conditions tonight. Most of them are related to submitting information on addressing the landscaping requirements. So one of those being, we would recommend compact planting strip be installed on the north side of the parking lot. The south side of the parking lot has a row of parallel spaces and there is a kind of a hedge row that separates that parcel from, from the next one. We think mimicking that design on the north side of the site would be appropriate and consistent with the zoning ordinance. We, there are also a few unpaved areas in the yard where we think additional landscaping would help to conform with the landscaping requirements. So without specifically saying what trees and where, we think five additional canopy trees would help to address those, those requirements, complying with section 36722 of the zoning ordinance. Additionally, I would add this evening, the recommendation that, a fourth recommendation be added, which is final site plan approval by our engineer who came tonight to also be here to address any questions. But we would, you know, typically ask for an engineering approval of the final site plan if there are no kind of outstanding issues that might affect the layout of the site. And at this time, the site is designed in a way where we feel like it will not change dramatically in the engineering approval of the process. But our engineer is here tonight to answer any questions as well, which is good. And I could go through each element of our review list or just provide the summary that I have. I know if there's any more details, I could just answer specific questions. But you've had my letter and receipt to review and having had an opportunity to look at the site plan as well. What's your pleasure?
I don't, I don't, excuse me. Myself, I don't have any specific questions regarding any of the items unless any of the other commissioners may. Anyone have any questions on the review?
No, sir. It's all in the letter.
Mr. Kuzno, you're good?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so yeah, if you want to just give your recommendation, Mr. Lippens, and then I would like to go to Mr. McNamara for his comments.
Yeah, my recommendation is to approve with conditions. Conditions being that the three landscaping related conditions in the letter that, that are submitted on a revised site plan to be approved administratively by the township planner. And the fourth condition that I stated prior, which is not in the letter, but that the site plan be subject to a final engineering approval as well.
Thank you. Mr. McNamara from OHM, can you please give your comments regarding the site?
Yes. Make sure it's on there. Good evening. Thank you. Really, the biggest engineering concern initially with this project was what a potential impact that this expansion would have on the sewer use, REU factor. So back in April, when this initially came in, we did coordinate with the utility department. And based on the size and the nature of the use of the proposed addition, no adjustment is necessary for that. The addition itself is proposed over an existing area that's already asphalt pavement. So there's no net change to the impervious or the drainage characteristics of the site. So essentially, the items that we had in our April letter, which I believe the majority of them have been addressed in the revised plans, we'll confirm that. But those are really just housekeeping items, clarifying some existing information. So we don't have any concerns from a layout perspective or from water, sewer, or storm drainage for the project. So I agree that it would be appropriate to approve with the condition that we just confirm that those housekeeping items have been addressed on the plan.
Thank you. So just one quick question, Mr. McNamara, on my part. The items that were listed on the previous review, did you did see those on the most current site plan? Or are you, is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other questions for Mr. McNamara? Ms. Infante?
Just a very small item, that it does say if there are no objections from the fire department, and I was just wondering, did anybody run this by them? Or, I mean, it sounds like it was fine in terms of the engineering, the access, but did anybody run it by? Just because I read that and I didn't see that in the plan.
It's 391 square feet. They're not adding on any square footage for people for dining. It's for their kitchen and housekeeping area in the rear, so.
So not necessary?
In my opinion, no.
Any other questions?
Just real quick.
Mr. Kuzno?
I'm just wondering why, why the engineering review letter is not pertaining to the current plan versus April 25th, when you wrote your original one?
Mr. McNamara?
Yeah, I hadn't received the revised plan, and so Mary had contacted me in advance of this meeting to ask if, I guess what our position was on it. And so, and that's the email, I think, that's in your package. And I just said that the items we had weren't items that were a concern with the project. It was essentially housekeeping and clarification items. So since then, we've seen that those have been added. They're essentially just notes and clarifications to the plan. So there were never any concerns from the original submittal with the nature and the layout of the proposed project.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Just, and for future, Mr. McNamara, if we could, you know, if you did, I mean, obviously our last report to the commission was that it did not appear to be in substantial compliance. But if you could give us a, your letter had with, you know, that your second review in some form or fashion, I think would be very helpful.
Will do that.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I, I just have a statement to make. That this is 391 square feet addition. It's cleaning up the rear of their property. And as one business owner in this community, we're, we've had them jump through tremendous hoops where it's almost to the point where businesses don't want to improve or they don't want to come in this township. And being a fellow business owner here, I hear it from All-Star Alarm, I hear it from Old Dono Electric, I am part of it, being part of Living Water Church, which we were almost going to close the plans and resell the property because it is cost prohibitive to open a business in this community and to deal with our engineers, our planners. It is so expensive to do that, that I would like to see small additions like this, that we, as a planning commission, we look at a boundary guidelines of a percentage of the overall square foot. If it's, if it's under a percentage, that they go through approval in-house. Because again, it is so cost prohibitive for businesses today to come in and operate in our community. And again, I hear it from these business owners, because I'm a fellow business owner in this community. And I've asked these guys to put it in writing. I'm getting several of them to do so. And again, you know, speaking to them as owners of their business, because I do go in their restaurant quite often, because I do patronize all of our businesses in this community, being a fellow business owner. It is cost prohibitive for the businesses to do improvements because of all of the hoops we require them. We require West Bloomfield plans for a beautiful rural township with a lake. And so I would really like the other commissioners to think about what I'm sharing with you. And we look at something like this to give businesses some assistance, because again, it is cost prohibitive for them to do improvements or almost to come into our township and start a project from scratch. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aquinto. No offense to your comments, but there are certain issues with this particular site that it did indeed have to go through the process. But your comments are heard. I'd like to continue on with the, make it a motion to, I make a motion to recommend approval with conditions as listed on the McKenna report dated September 13th, 2017. Page four, for the Bobber Down, 8475 Main Street. Do I hear support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Kuzno. Any questions on the motion? Mr. Aquinto?
Do I have to let them speak first?
I'd like to, I'll finish the motion, but if you'd like to speak after I make the motion, that would be fine. I'm sorry I didn't call upon you to have any comments through the, through the procedure. But I will, I'll entertain your comments. I think, thank you. Mr. Aquinto?
Do we, and again, I'm understanding your motion. I am in favor of the approval, but I, to go through the expense of five canopy trees plus some of the other recommendations, could some of that be cut back? And again, it is expensive to add five canopy trees, the other landscaping, et cetera. So is there any way that that could be less of a requirement? Maybe a couple trees instead of five? Again, those are very expensive trees. So I'm asking our planner that question.
Mr. Lippens?
I think, you know, the rec, the zoning ordinance has requirements and it's within the township purview to look at changing those requirements and changing the approval processes. But our recommendations and the approval process we go through are based on the township's legal requirements for plan review. And the recommendation to add canopy trees to the site, there are things that can be done. I would say our recommendation is to add the landscaping. You could give them time to comply with adding the landscaping. But the, you know, the reason those recommendations are made is to bring the site into conformance with the township zoning ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Lippens. Mr. Zarzaki?
Looking at the recommendation here, you've talked to our planning consultant here. We recommend five canopy trees be shown on site plans if possible. So you've left it kind of floating in the air at this point. Knowing the site across the street, I have to agree with Mr. Aquinto that I think on this site, the trees may not be necessary. I'd like to make a amendment to the proposal, that we delete the requirement for the five canopy trees on this site, however, leaving the landscape materials used on the site for the other components remaining compliant with our zoning ordinance.
I would support the friendly amendment if it's accepted.
Okay, so you're making, you're making an amendment to the motion of conditions. So you want to remove the conditions?
Just condition number three, correct, sir?
Well, half of condition three. Like, the other half of it is landscaping materials used.
Okay.
Shall comply. We should leave that in.
Yes.
But I'm saying, let's remove the ambiguous requirement for five trees, because it says if possible. Who's going to make that decision if it's possible? It's, we're even floating.
Okay, well, we're, we're going to answer that through the order of the motion then. Okay, so you want, you have support on motion, the original amendment. Questions on that motion? On the, on the amended motion? I do.
Yeah.
Mr. Kuzno?
So, Mr. Lippens, is a recommendation from the planner versus a requirement of the zoning ordinance are two different things? Is that correct? Or is your recommendation in conformance with the zoning requirements?
I, I think that the caveat that I want to place on this is that we did not get a full landscaping plan as part of the submittal. And our goal was to be flexible and business friendly, which is why we are here tonight recommending to approve with some deference given to staff to approve some things administratively. And when it says if possible, it means that with additional information about the landscaping, we might look at this issue and decide that the existing trees on the site are, you know, more sufficient than the information we have right now, that there are site drainage or, you know, planting conditions that might prevent five, but maybe we could get three. So we're asking for some flexibility to work with the applicant, determine based on the fact that this is an existing site and there are site constraints. It is not a big site. Much of the site is paved. We feel that we could make a staff level determination about whether or not adding the additional landscaping is substantively addressing the requirements of the zoning ordinance. And that's why our terminology was if possible, because we don't really know what's there based on what we have, and we'd like the opportunity to look at it. If it's planning commission's preference to just say, you know, based on our experience, our knowledge of the area, we don't think it's, this requirement is necessary, I think, I have no objection to the amendment proposed if that is the preference of the commission tonight.
Anything else, Mr. Kuzno? So again, we have, in, in order to be business friendly, we are trying to accommodate the applicant as best possible, but yet, we didn't have a full landscape plan. So it's kind of a catch-22. We would like to accommodate applicants, get them through the process. Sometimes we don't receive all the information. We're trying to apply the applicable ordinance language, and we're at a decision point, you know, where we still don't have enough information. But I would be comfortable myself for an administrative decision to try to, if there's room possible, that some be done, on the canopy trees. So that's, that's my personal opinion. So we have, do we have any other comments? Mr. Kuzno? No? Okay, so we have a motion to approve with conditions, one, two, and four, and three, as seen best by the administration? Or not?
I'd accept that. I would.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor. Mr. Zarzaki will do a real call vote, please.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzno?
Yes.
Mr. Aquinto?
Yes.
Ms. Infante?
Yes.
Ms. Stephens?
Yes.
Zarzaki?
Yes. Approved.
Approved, yes.
Thank you. At this time, I'd go to the applicants. Anyone wish to comment? Thank you. You have to turn the switch and please speak directly in, so the audience, listening audience can hear.
Testing.
Yep.
Kristin Delaney, 8475 Main Street. Our application is complete. I have an email dated April 26, 2017, from Patrick Sloan. And we clarified that our lot isn't just partially paved, it's paved from lot line to lot line. So those berms you see on either side, they belong to the neighboring property owners. At this point, money for landscaping is not an issue. We've put $150,000 in the building. This project's going to cost a substantial amount. So landscaping is the least of our concerns, and if I had room to put it in there, I would put it in there. But we are simply paved from lot line to lot line. So putting trees up along the expressway, which is the only little bit of green space we own, seems kind of counterintuitive, because we like to be visible from the expressway. So that was the correspondence I have with Patrick, which is why we didn't have a landscape plan. It's completely impervious surface from lot line to lot line. So I hope that answers some questions. Does anybody else have any questions?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is that it? Is that it? Thank you. Okay, we'll go to item number, old night, item number 10, further discussion, the proposed zoning ordinance amendments on signs. If, Mr. Zarzaki, if you can help me out, I was not present at the last meeting as to where we left off and what, where we would start up again, please? Do you know?
Basically, we went through the rest of the remaining ordinance changes completely. So they had their information for any changes. I don't believe there were any major changes for the rest of the document. So at this point, we've gone through, minus yourself being absent last time, the entire process.
Okay. So the whole document was gone through? Okay. Is there any, Mr. Lippens, would you like to make any further comment on the discussion of the sign ordinance?
Yeah, just a few updates. Since the last conversation, I was able to make all the changes. I had a few comments. Towards the end of the conversation that we, not that we had at the last meeting, but the one that we had at the meeting before that, there was a request to simplify the language under 36790.
Can you say what page, please?
Illumination, which is page eight and nine. And that came after the suggestion to simplify the substitution clause. And after reading this language through, I think, well, complicated, they're fairly clear in what they refer to. So I made the decision not, not to change these, and I'm asking for basically planning commission to concur with these two sections that, that the language is clear. Particularly the substitution clause, while that seems a little bit maybe like legalese, it's, it's a, it's a good substitution clause, and because it's in there, it protects the township, because it basically says you can substitute commercial copy for non-commercial copy, which is an important thing to have in your sign ordinance.
That was section 36 dash 791.
Yeah, 91, yes. And then there was a comment for 36790 illumination, which is right before that, that also that seemed to be. seemed to be, to some commissioners, to be kind of a complicated language, but when I read through it, I thought it was fairly clear for what it was regulating.
On the illumination?
Correct.
Number seven?
Yes. So I'm talking about those two sections there, 791-7 and then, or 790-7 and 791 substitution. There are no changes to those sections since our conversation.
And you'd like to continue as it's presented?
That's why, I think it makes sense kind of to leave that there. If indeed, we want to, you know, regulate these things, which I think we do, I don't have issue with that language.
Okay. Any comments on that suggestion?
I have a question on that.
Yes, Mr. Aquino.
So, where it says "no signs shall have blinding, flashing, or fluttering lights or other illuminated devices." So, an open sign, where it's O-P-E-N, where there's a lot of open signs that are made where it's blank, and then the O-P-E-N come on intermittently, so then it spells "open." So is that against that clause? Because, I mean, I see a number of businesses in our community use an open sign such as And again, it's literally for interpretation, then, in my opinion, reading that.
Yeah, so, and that's kind of the nature of my comment, which is that if we want to regulate flashing that type of illumination, then this language is clear. Because I would say, yes, what we're saying is we don't want flashing signs like that.
So again, we're being more restrictive on businesses that are already using that within our community.
Only, it's, if I may interject, I mean, this is a general guideline. I mean, you may have, although your example is one of, one that may be common, but there can be a gambit of things that would fall under blinding, flashing, fluttering lights, so...
I mean, like, I don't consider that blinding, you know, when it's spelling out "open," it's not a obtrusive bright light, you know? But again, there's a number of businesses that use that driving down Main Street in our community. And so, that's why I'm asking, because I don't want our staff to, you know, then be going, "Well, how do I interpret this?" Right? So, I mean, again, because that's how I interpreted it, by saying, "Okay, well, then that would be part of that."
So you might consider an open sign to be an incidental sign, so we could maybe add an exception for that type of sign, if that's the preference of Planning Commission. I would say that there are other types of signs that are common, or, you know, flashing displays that are commonly used that you might not want to permit. So, you know, I think the question about, you know, do you want to, you know, regulate this or not is probably a good discussion to have, but the language as to kind of what is defining, I think, is kind of clear. So the use is, I think, a good discussion. I'm not sure, without guidance, about what types of signs we want to permit and not permit. Just changing the language makes sense.
Mr. Zarzaki?
Well, I agree, it's a matter of interpretation, but the way I read this is the second sentence, illumination, electronic message signs, I would classify an open sign as an electronic message sign, which is under a different part of the ordinance to begin with. So the flashing, I believe, is more of, I think we're trying to get rid of the strobes and things like that, that people might want to put on a sign for an opening or something. But it's going to be difficult to list every sign that's acceptable versus ones that aren't acceptable, so the matter of interpretation would be a matter of maybe explaining that to our code enforcement people and the office people that are going to be, you know, handling this, that we're not talking about open signs, we're not talking about the neon-type sign that a lot of people use, so... The wording may be a little strange, but I don't see a problem with it. I mean, it's going to be an interpretation, everything's interpretation nowadays, so it's a matter of where do we stop?
I agree with Mr. Zarzaki. I mean, there's always going to be an example that falls between the cracks on just about any part of this ordinance, and you would hope that the interpretation in the field on enforcement is going to be commonsensical and not disruptive to a person's business or otherwise, so... But we do have to have language to cover the extreme of the example, so...
Yes. Thank you.
Mr. Kuzno, did you have a comment?
No.
No?
No.
Okay, thank you. So I...
I did have one other question.
Yes, Mr. Aquino?
And I don't remember where it was, but I know Mr. Kuzno brought it up two meetings ago. As far as the material, it was for like the one nice wood sign on North Tertoe, "We don't want to prohibit creativeness for signs like that." So was that corrected?
I did address that, yes. And I did want to bring it up in my report tonight because I know that that was an important The, I found that combustible material was defined, which I didn't point out the first time we had that discussion. So, I added some sentence to that material saying...
What page, sir?
I'm looking, because I hadn't found that one yet. Let me find it, and then we can discuss it.
So it's on page eight as well?
Oh, thank you.
Under material, so five, right?
Yeah, so, thank you very much. I found that the question of non-combustible material was defined, and I think that it stated it must be more than, you know, burns at a temperature of, I don't remember how many degrees. I can find that reference for you, too. Definitions... Non-combustible material, okay, that's on page seven. It says, "Any material that will not ignite below a temperature of 1,200 degrees Fahrenheit and not continue to burn or glow at that temperature." So, to address that, in this thing, I say it must be constructed or coated, so it could have a non-combustible paint or coating, pressurized wood, if it would meet that definition. And then I said, "Or it must be approved by the fire chief." And in that case, I was thinking, you know, if you have a sign and it's, you know, more than a certain distance from a building, it might not propose a fire threat, so it's a practical way of addressing that, you know, if we want a wood sign, if it can't be coated or made from a material that meets that 1,200 degree Fahrenheit, we could ask for an opinion or approval letter from the fire chief. And I hope that that addresses the concern, because I agree flexibility in design is important.
Thank you.
So, does the material is the sign itself, or the supporting structure of the sign? Or is it both?
I think it's both.
Okay, well, it's just, it's a hard, it's just a hard one, I guess, for me. I think I need to think about it more, actually, but you're going to provide us with an updated copy of this next meeting, or is this the update?
This is the update.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay.
So I can...
You added the fire marshal into this one.
I'm sorry?
The fire marshal comment is already added into this one.
Okay.
By the township fire chief.
Yeah. Do we have to find out what burns at less than 1,200 degrees Fahrenheit? Have to have a list of all those things that might...
Every wood's going to burn. You're eliminating a lot of things.
You are, yeah. So, I mean, do we want to really put that, that number in?
So, Mr. Lippens, I guess, what is the intent of the material? Where's it going, I guess? I could see supporting structure of a sign being non-combustible, maybe not the sign itself. Most plastic-covered signs aren't going to meet that rating.
Right.
That are white and plastic and have illumination behind. So I think we're really putting options in a box with this one. I think it needs to be looked at, I guess. That's my opinion. I don't know what the other commissioners may think. I would be in favor if it was like supporting structure, and I'm looking at maybe a bigger example, such as, you know, a large shopping area, condos, a hotel, their sign, you know, actually, there's an example up 23 south of Lee Road, the hotel, there's a billboard up there, made of basins, it was beautiful. But if that's something, if that's a direction, I think, if that's what we're trying to get, then I guess I still have a problem with the language. Other commissioners, Mr. Zarzaki?
Yeah, the term "fire-treated" is another ambiguous term. I'm licensed as a fireproofing inspector under the building codes, and even fire-treated wood burns. It chars on the outside, it just does not lose more than 70% of its strength for one hour. That's the design of the fire-treated wood. 1,200 degrees, you're right, it's going to melt plastics and everything else, so it's going to eliminate a lot of material. I think at this point, we should eliminate the 1,200 degrees and leave it up to our fire marshal, fire chief, to make the proper decision. That's what he's here for. Even in the building codes, we've had a lot of problems trying to figure out what should be fireproof anymore. Your coatings are the same way. The coatings that you apply to a product simply char to protect the wood. It still eventually burns, but it's going to preserve it only for an hour. That's all the building code requires. There are some that will preserve up to four hours if they're a special epoxy-grade material, but we're not going to see those on signs typically. You're going to see the latex fire-treated, you know, materials, so to eliminate a lot of our other materials, I think, is a disservice to our people, so I think we should get rid of the 1,200 degrees at this point and leave it up to the fire marshal to determine if that material is proper for the sign.
Thank you. Mr. Aquino?
I mean, is your intent to eliminate those plastic signs on the building that are throughout the town? Because, I mean, that would do so, that would eliminate that.
I think the intent is to encourage, you know, durable, quality materials, and this is a way of encouraging those types of materials. So yes, to make it, you know, plastics or materials that weren't intended to last a long time would be, not meet the intent of this, and, but I feel like we also don't want to use, eliminate the ability to use wood signs, or especially, I think, the concern that was initially discussed was in rural areas, we want signs to look appropriate for those areas. And I think the idea about saying that we could approve signs of any material with the fire chief review is that, you know, in a rural area, probably those signs that we're looking at would be a fair, fairly far away from the building, and would, even if they were a material that was combustible, wouldn't have the same threat to other structures. So it was an attempt at addressing, you know, both concerns, material and potential fire hazards.
I mean, a freestanding sign that uses the plastic on both sides, it's illuminated, it's, again, especially if it's freestanding, I mean, and it meets the requirements of ordinances, I am in favor of that. And again, same thing on buildings, that's what you see on most of our buildings within our communities, even Bobberdown right across the street, it's an illuminated sign that says, "Bobberdown." I do not want to eliminate giving the property owners that option to go with that type of sign, because they're done tastefully, they look well, and they really help promote businesses. So I am totally against putting the 1,200 degrees in there and removing that type of option as a sign for a business.
Ms. Stephens?
I have a question. How often do signs burst into flames?
Never.
Why is, why, I have never seen such a provision in a sign ordinance. What are we getting at? If it is granted an electrical permit, is that not what we're most concerned about? That it is installed safely and properly?
Correct.
Then why, why are we spending so much time going over those pieces?
Right, and typically, you know, the BUL ratings on signs, and as you said, if it's installed with electric permits and so forth, and that's a good point Ms. Stephens had, because I was going to say, there's, some signs are not illuminated at all, but, so why make them non-combustible? And really, the thing's burdensome, so basically, the fire chief is going to be looking at every sign. And I don't think that's what we want.
They're going to be able to fight fires.
I don't think that's what we want to do. So, Ms. Infante, did you have a comment? Okay. Mr. Kuzno?
So, I mean, just go back to the very beginning, is this our existing ordinance that we're trying to clean up, or is this something that came from McKenna, from other communities that were kind of incorporated into our ordinance? Or both? I guess that's to you, Paul.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. No, I think this is model language. It's new language. You know, it comes out of some research for ordinances that we've been doing and updating ordinances, and I think it is a statement that is designed and intended to get all signs to be of a non-combustible material, a durable material, long-lasting material. You know, I think that we've kind of had a good discussion about it, and I'm hearing that the preference is not to have that because it rules out too many types of materials. That, I think, is an appropriate discussion, and I would have no objection to removing it all. Since our last conversation, you know, my goal was to look at it and see if there was a way to make it more flexible and more inclusive, and certainly more inclusive in some of our more rural areas. And, you know, this was an attempt to address the discussion. I'm hearing the preference would be to strike it, and I think that that is okay and appropriate. The question that I would have as follow-up would be, do we want some other type of material regulation? Do we want to look at some other type of material regulation? Or are we happy just to move on and not have something specifically addressing materials?
Ms. Stephens?
Do you mean in terms of combustibility, or do you mean in terms of aesthetics?
I think I mean aesthetics and durability, because if we can't accomplish that through looking at combustibility, we might have to look at some other type of regulation that would accommodate similar or dissimilar result, depending on what Planning Commission thinks is appropriate for material regulations. depending on what planning commission thinks is appropriate, uh, for material regulations.
Mr. Iquenel?
So, again, I'll refer to the Bobberdown sign that's illuminated on the building. That's done by a proper sign company. That's, plastic-coated sign is gonna last for a lot of years because it's encased in a metal case. Same thing with our sign at Living Water. We had that professionally done from a sign company. They replaced that. It's in a metal housing. And, you know, that sign will last for years. So, um, and again, I believe that those signs like that are very tastefully done. They really help businesses. And again, as long as they meet the requirements of the square footage for the sign, et cetera, then I am in favor of signs like that. And, uh, again, when they're professionally done, they last and they're, they're used with the prop-, the proper material is used for them.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if there's any way we can say industry-accepted standards or something like that? Or like even you mentioned UL listings or something like that? I mean.
Well, that's for electric. But I, I'm, if we, if we omitted mater-, that material clause, I'd be willing, I'd, I'd be fine with that.
Yeah.
That's, that's my opinion. I don't.
I agree.
Other commissioners agree? Thank you. Okay. Is there any other, uh, items, Mr. Lippens, that you wanna touch upon?
Um, yeah, so the, I think the last thing that I had a question about was, um, the, uh, off-premise regulations. And, um, the question was, you know.
What page are you answering?
This is on page eight.
Okay.
I just wanted to, uh, say that, um, when we discussed this, um, the, um, the question was, is, is this language consistent with the Supreme Court decision? And my answer at, at that time and still is, that many communities are still using this as a way of, uh, regulate, regulating commercial speech on signs. But, um, I think if planning commission was, um, satisfied with the rest of the ordinance, I would just bring this to the township attorney and tell him about our discussion and get kind, their approval before we moved, moved on. But I think, um, this is, you know, one of the last things, um, based on our conversation, that I think we need some additional feedback on.
Thank you. I, I agree, I agree that if there's a question in it. Any other comments? No? Okay.
Can you give me an example of what that might be? What is off-site or off-premise sign?
What it does is it prevents someone from, um, using basically, uh, sign as a, as a principal use for advertising. So, it, it does, it is content-related, but it's content-related in a way that, uh, many people are still comfortable regulating. So, we've recommended we do it for that, for that purpose.
I don't, I, I don't, I need an example of what, how that would be done. Where, where is an off-premise?
These types of clauses are, are typically used for, uh, billboards and that type of advertising.
So, are you referring to, say, um, a sign on a building has to relate to that business that is occupying that building? Essentially? Or a portion thereof of that building? Is that an example?
Yes. Yeah. That's the type of regulation that this, these distinctions are designed to permit regulating.
So, let's say like, uh, what's our heavy equipment dealer down here?
Eschleman Equipment.
Eschleman. So, if he got a New Holland sign on his property, is that appropriate or not appropriate? He sells New Holland equipment there. It doesn't say Eschleman. It, it says New Holland. Or Kiody or.
Again, which are, that's a good question. Those are both products which he represents and he stocks and he has on his property.
Right. I'm just curious.
Right.
I don't understand what this, this.
That sign on another location other than his premises is what that's referring to?
Okay, so if that were at the gas station that got abandoned at 6 Mile, would be totally un.
That's where I would apply that paragraph. Or?
If it said Eschleman's a mile up the road?
It could be a lead-in sign, exactly.
Okay.
Equipment for sale and it's two miles from the place.
Yeah.
Am I correct, Mr. Lippens?
Um, yes. And so the question is, this is, the, the question is, can we continue to regulate signage in this way? Uh, not that we haven't in the past. And we've recommended that we don't eliminate altogether this type of regulation. So, we're not looking specifically at district-by-district what's permitted, what size is permitted, whether someone on the specific site can do this or not. Because I think essentially, we, we looked at, uh, last meeting, the, the regulations district-by-district, and m- many of them were unchanged. And we didn't actually have that much discussion about whether it was appropriate to regulate that way in the districts. This, these are in definitions. And the question was, can we continue to define content in this way? And my response was, many communities are continuing to do it. And, uh, we've recommended that Northfield Township continue to look at the content in this way. But prior to making a final decision, we've thought that we'll have that discussion with the township attorney to see if they concur that continuing to regulate content in that way is, is appropriate or something they would also recommend continuing to do.
Okay.
May I, may I ask another question? Paul, where in the ordinance would a homeowner be allowed to put up their political signs, their real estate signs? The signs saying, you know, "My child is a volleyball all-star," that type of thing? And on page 10, it, it talks about yard signs, not, non-commercial yard signs, on-premise commercial yard signs, off-premise commercial. I don't see yard signs defined in the definitions. And I don't see yard signs called out as an exemption from a permit.
You're referring to like, support Trojan Athletics, something like that?
Right.
Right? Prime example, right? Okay.
Yeah. And, and even real estate signs.
Yeah.
There, there's a, there's a list of signs that is exempt from a permit. And one of them is incidental signs. But an incidental sign is defined as a sign that is really not to catch your eye. It, it's not something that you see from the right-of-way. It is more of a directional sign.
Yeah, I'm, uh, we're on page 11?
Yeah. Yeah, 10 and 11 are the, um, that's, those are the pages I was looking at for the yard signs. But yard sign is not in the definition section. And it's not called out, uh, it's not, um, it wouldn't even fall under the definition of an incidental sign. And it wouldn't fall under the list of signs exempt from requiring a permit.
And under incidental sign, two square feet is, uh, if that's the determining factor, that's, that would be, the signs that Ms. Stephens is speaking of are bigger than that typically. So, that would omit them from incidental sign?
Yeah, I, so, I've just make, taken a second to read it to make sure that I understand the question and I'm providing good feedback. It seems to me that the, uh, real estate signs, um, farm, open house signs, uh, all of the comments on the right side of your column, they refer to a variety of different signs that were, um, essentially regulating content that are now being described as yard signs. And we're permitting, you know, relatively the same square footage and size of signs, but they're all called yard signs now instead of distinguishing by, um, specific types of use or, or character. I think your, your comment about should we have a definition for yard sign is, is, um, is a good comment.
As do, I agree with that, too.
And, and we certainly don't, we, we certainly wanna include yard signs in the list of signs that do not require a permit.
Yes.
And then it goes back to the issue of the non-commercial off, on-premise commercial, off-premise commercial. And I certainly would still like some more clarification if we could get, you know, I'm anxious to see what the attorney says about, about that issue.
Ms. Iquenel?
Thank you. And again, I, I appreciate all the understanding from all the commissioners. Yes, I totally understand we need rules and we need ordinances. But we are a rural community. We, we are not West Bloomfield. We are not downtown Ann Arbor either. And, you know, the, that's, to me, what makes up the character of Northfield Township is, you know, we're a rural community. And I'm not saying not to have any, but we have to be realistic. Because again, we're not a concrete-paved community like West Bloomfield or all Ann Arbor either, right? And that again, is what makes up the beautiful character of this township. So, I, I think it's important that we always keep that in mind, for our residents and our businesses because that's what attracts them here. And that's why people move here. And that's why people have lived here and stayed here because, again, of that rural character. And we're not, again, a concrete asphalt community. Thank you.
Ms. Infante?
I, I'd like to add on that just a little bit. Um, as somebody who has a sign advertising honey and my daughter advertising eggs, and I'm thinking, oh my God, is this a permit? We're also a very entrepreneurial environment. And I think the cool signs out there saying maple, you know, woodcut. And I, I think it's, it's an important part of the community. I mean, we don't wanna go too far and get, again, the problem with sign pollution. But there, there should be something there that lets people, you know, advertise their eggs for sale. But aesthetics and design and safety are obviously very important. And I'm sure my sign is totally combustible.
So, a- at this point, Mr. Lippens, would you suggest that we, um, get some revisions on, on yet again, still on this document and review it possibly next time?
Yeah, well, I, I think that the, the, just to kinda characterize what's happening here a little bit, and we've discussed it. But, you know, in terms of, um, you know, regulating signs in your residential areas or in the agricultural areas, only by, or, you know, more by square footage and the number of signs, it allows the flexibility for entrepreneurship and for the preservation of the rural character of the community. And it actually, I think, will be more flexible for business owners in that respect. Because, you know, let's say, before you were permitted to have a, um, real estate sign if you're selling your property. Now you can use that general square footage for another sign if you want. But if you were to sell your house, um, or, um, if you were to sell your house, then you'd have to use it for your, your real estate sign and maybe take down your, your honey sign. So, we're, it's, it, there's more flexibility in, added here. And I think it makes sense, uh, from the perspective of, you know, we're really concerned with, uh, the look and feel of the community. How many signs are out there? Is there sign pollution? And I think that this is moving in that direction. And so, you know, the summary of the discussion that I have tonight is, I, I think that, um, defining yard sign, uh, and making sure that they're not signs requiring a permit, uh, which I don't believe they are, but I'll, I'll double-check that, was one feedback I got. Is it okay if I summarize all the feedback?
Sure.
Um, I got feedback to strike the, the material, um, uh, from the zoning ordinance. And, uh, then feedback to go ahead and, um, get a township attorney opinion on the off-premise, off-premise distinction. And, um, with, with those changes, um, we would look at another, another draft.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll, we'll move on to, uh, item 12. Approval of preceding minutes from September 6th. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes is presented.
I'll support that. Dispense with reading.
Yes, sir.
All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Uh, final call to the public. Seeing none, we will move on to 14 comments from commissioners. We'll start with Ms. Infante. Thank you. Ms. Stephens?
Nothing. Thank you.
Mr. Zarzaki?
Nothing.
Mr. Iquenel?
Uh, again, thank you that the Parks and Rec Committee meeting is tomorrow evening here in this building on the first floor at 7 o'clock. They are open meetings. And if you have any interest in, uh, attending, please, you are welcome. Thank you.
Mr. Kuznul?
Yeah, I just wanted to address, uh, Mr. Iquenel's comments about, uh, business-friendly, reviews for plans. And I, and I agree that it can be burdensome for plans. And I also, I'm, as an engineer, I've submitted plenty, many plans. I, I, I hate the use of, um, precedence as being a way to, a reason to not do something. But at the same time, we do have ordinances for the purpose of, um, regulating these things. And we can't show favoritism one way or the other. Maybe we can put limits on to, like you said, percentages of space that's being added or something like that to classify it as a, as a minor change versus a major change. That's certainly reasonable. But I think that if we, if we tend to be, uh, I like you, I'm gonna give you something easy versus I don't like you, I'm gonna give you something hard, is not, not appropriate either. So, we need to be careful on those ma- matters, too. So, and, and again, precedence, I, I, that, you, you're setting yourself up for precedence by, by giving someone something simple or making, taking something off the table from them. You're setting a precedent for the next guy, uh, which they're gonna use that argument. If, if they know, if they know about it, they're gonna use that argument. So, that's how it goes, you know? So, anyway, thank you.
Good points. No comments from me. Thank you. Like to announce the next regular meeting, October 4th, 2017. And, uh.
Make a motion adjourned?
Thank, I'll support that. Any questions on the more motion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye? Aye? Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you.[1764.51][1764.51]